Okay.
Like the comments being in order and welcome everybody to our board meeting on February seventeenth and ask supervisor Kramer to do the pledge allegiance.
Mr. Conover, Mr. Leggett, Mr. Diamond, Mr. McDevitt, Ms. Kramer, Mr. Bruno, Mr. Driscoll, Mrs. Frazier, Mr. Dossi, Mr. Smith, Mr. Dickinson, Mr. Merlino, Mr. Mr. Stroud, Mr. Wild.
I'm glad you see you at this board and I'm very proud to advance the role being of President of Warren County. Thank you.
Mr. McGowan, your Beatty.
I will make a speech. Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Thomas. Chairman Garrity, form is established.
Before we start the meeting, I'd like to welcome Mark Smith, our new supervisor, Town Johnson, Mark. And also our outgoing supervisor, Andrew Hogan from Town of Johnsburg, who is going on and we wish her all the best, Andrew. In the Annabelle Palace, the mayor of the city of Glenfall, there. All right. Now we'll open up the privilege to the poor and public comment. Anybody wish to speak about anything today? It's going to come up at the board game or not at the board. No, okay. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the January twentieth, twenty, twenty-three board meeting and their February third, twenty, twenty-three special board meeting. Somebody want to make motion by supervisor Bruno, we have second by supervisor Dickinson. Those are favored. Okay, we have the employee of the month. We're very honored this month. We recognize Olivia Cohen. She is now a health educator at the Public Health Department. I'm going to ask Janelle Jones, please come up and introduce her and say her few words. Olivia is a fairly new employee, advanced very far in public health.
Good morning, everybody. It's my pleasure to congratulate Olivia Cohen as Warren County's employee of the month. Olivia has a bachelor's degree in public health from SUNY Albany as an indefinite asset to health services and all the residents of Warren County. Olivia first came to health services in July of twenty twenty-one when health services was buried with COVID cases as per diem health assistant. She worked very well and well over full-time hours to meet our agency's demands. Thankfully, Olivia is a self-starter and quickly jumped in to help with all the case investigations, calls, visits, monitoring, handling other concerns as they presented. She has easily earned the respect of coworkers and administrative staff, which we heavily rely on her as well. She is very organized, resourceful, very detail oriented, a very dedicated employee, willing to fill any gap, and who is always ready to tackle any challenge. Health Services promoted Olivia the full-time health educator in January of twenty twenty-two. Olivia has quickly settled into that role to assist with all of our agency needs. Recently, she has filled some very major gaps in our agency. In September, our last full-time public health nurse resigned, leaving a very significant void. Olivia readily volunteered to cover all the communicable disease responsibilities, doing our disease investigations, submitting reports to the state health department. These programs include a variety of transmissible diseases, and she also quickly applied her COVID knowledge to enter an ever-changing disease of the day. Her efforts have created a seamless transition, and I'm very thankful for that. Thankfully, she's a quick learner and still supports our COVID efforts as needed. Recently, she updated all of our COVID tracking systems without being asked and making them even better than they were already. Olivia has also readily assumed the responsibility for our rabies program, including following up on dog bites, potential rabies exposure, submitting rabies specimens, and providing authorization for rabies post-exposure prophylaxis and preparing our rabies reports. Olivia is helping with our immunization program as well. While not able to give immunizations because she's not a nurse, she's a huge asset organizing and managing our daycare school and provider immunization records surveys and outreach. She recently made resource folders to benefit this initiative. I'm sure I'm missing some other very major contributions that she has done for our agency, but she's always willing to volunteer for new things. She has a very calm presence, which is very nice. She's always dependable. She looks for ways to make things easier, not only provide suggestions, but then creates the way and generally implements it. She's a quiet leader. Far from attention in the spotlight, so today's probably a little difficult for her, but she's found anywhere there's a problem or a gap and ready to get things done. When not working, she attends hockey games and she's a loving big sister who enjoys game nights with her siblings. I'm very proud to say recently Olivia applied for a master of public health program, what she was accepted into, and I strongly support and have no reservations. She demonstrates leadership potential. She has a very positive attitude, and this makes her the perfect candidate. I look forward to seeing what Olivia can accomplish in her career, and I'm very honored to work with her. She is truly amazing. I thank her for all she has done for our agency in her very short tenure, and I thank you for letting her be employee of the month.
We wish you all the best. Thank you, Janelle. If you have anything you would like to say. There are no graduates of the Leadership Training School this morning, so we'll go report at chairs and I'm going to pass my report on and county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, what do you want me to do? Oh, we'll do the committee chairs first. So we'll start with supervisor Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I was ready to go. My only report is that real property passed a resolution to authorize a petty cash fund for the real property office, and it's important to help their operations run smoothly, and it's only forty dollars, so we would ask for your support for that. And we did authorize the committee chair to send a letter regarding the septic inspection funding program out of New York State, so we're asking for more money. And we will have a meeting coming up soon to ask for a resolution from the county board to seek an additional eligibility for the septic replacement funding for our homeowners on the lake. So we'll look for that. Please look for that next month. Thank you. That's my report.
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County facilities met on January twenty-fourth. We had a number of items discussed. The fleet car request program is working very well. I don't know if you're all familiar with that. That's county furnishing cars, et cetera. You still want to call us employees. I don't know if Mr. Heydros has anything to add to that. If not, the abatement demolition of the former county jail is complete. And in addition to that, we are, we had a meeting this week regarding the creation of the regional morgue, and there'll be more to come on that soon. We met as a committee myself, Mr. Heydros, Dr. Sickericki, he's a forensic pathologist, Supervisor McGowan, et cetera, and I think this could be a big benefit to Warren County and the region. And as I said, we'll provide more detail on that later. Excuse me. Installation of a magnetometer at the DMV entrance. We're waiting on the state. Correct, Mr. Heydros? I guess they're, they're getting new ones. We're getting one of their old ones, is that? So hopefully in the not-too-distant future, that will be installed. Excuse me, sorry. And the Joseph Warren Museum, we're moving ahead with that. I don't know if supervisor Brown has anything to add there. Other than that, that concludes it. I have one other item. I left on your desk, so to speak, this bulk one oh one article. I just wanted to bring attention to it. I have no issue with the course itself. Problem I have is if you read this, at least read the first paragraph, so. SUNY College System is comprised of sixty-four campuses and the state is now mandating that you take and pass this class, diversity, equity, inclusion, social justice class, going to diploma. I don't have a problem. The problem I have is mandating this as a requisite requirement, get your degree or your diploma. So we, this county funds a large portion of the budget for, for SUNY Adirondack, and that falls under this. So I just wanted to raise awareness and attention to this. I don't expect much to come of this, but again, I wanted everyone to be aware of that. And as I said, you know, you can offer classes and whatever, whatever you want, but when you make this mandatory to get a degree or diploma, a lot of things come into play, not the least of which I wonder what the effect of this would have on enrollment at SUNY Adirondack. A number of students may look at this and say, hey, I don't, I don't need this. I don't want to put up with this, and I'm going to go somewhere else. The benefit of these SUNY colleges, as we all know, generally is that they are lower cost than their counterparts in the private sector. But people may look at this and say, well, as good as that is, or well, it may be, I'm going to go somewhere because I don't want to put up with this. So anyway, that's, that's all I have to say on that. And as again, I just wanted to raise awareness what's going on out there in case you're not aware. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Driscoll.
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman. The Human Services Committee met on Monday, January twenty-third. From that meeting came three resolutions, resolutions seventy-seven, seventy, seventy-eight, and seventy-nine. I wouldn't ask for your support of those resolutions. There are a couple of other Department of Social Services related matters that will be discussed in other committees during the course of today's meeting. Amy from Cooperative Extension of Warren County is here. She distributed a, the monthly program update for Cornell Cooperative Extension. I believe we still have one vacancy on that committee, the board's portion of their, their board. We also have one vacancy, as I understand it, on the Services Committee, so anyone who is interested in that should get in touch with, with the chairman. We will next meet on Wednesday, February twenty-second on or about ten forty in the morning, and I think that concludes my, my report. Thank you.
Supervisor Frazier.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Health Services met on January the twenty-third. I did not attend. I had like ten inches of snow and it was still coming down, and I decided I wasn't going to make that trip. So Mr. Conover filled in for me that day. I appreciate that. I can tell you that we, you have resolution sixty-four through seventy-six in front of you, and they deal with amending resolutions, amending agreements with pure foods, authorizing submission of a grant, amending resolutions again to deal with agreement, appointing members to different advisory boards. So they're all there pretty easy to understand, but I did want you to know I did not go into more detail, but our committee will meet on Wednesday, too, of this coming week. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Dossi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee did meet on January twenty-third as a result before you got resolutions fifty-four through sixty for your consideration. There's a company that just appoint members to various advisory boards and the others are the service agreements mostly for the sheriff's department. Our next meeting will be this coming Wednesday, February twenty-second at nine AM. We'll notice if you look at the district attorney agenda, it says February twenty-first. That's just a typo. The meetings are on the twenty-second. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Smith, we'll get a chance to hear from you next, next month. And as they said, the vacancies, you may be taking some of the vacancies, so Supervisor Dixon.
Actax has met, we've met, actually met a couple of times. We've been working diligently on the occupancy tax applications. We have about thirty of them. Some are big, some are small. We have passed resolutions eighty through eighty-four covering some of the projects that we have reviewed and given our blessing to and hope you all will support. We have a meeting coming up. We have a shortlist of about twelve that we're trying to get through, and then we have a couple different kind of applications that we're trying to figure out whether we can do them or not. So we've been busy spending your money and I don't know when our next meeting is.
Okay, Supervisor Merlino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. Tourism met on the twenty-third of January. We just have three resolutions, ninety-two, extending the agreement with the Adirondack Regional Tourism Council for regional marketing. Ninety-three is the extending the agreement with the Star LLC, providing the hotel star reports to our county. And ninety-four, an agreement with the offset house to print our colored brochure for this of spring, and that's all set to go. Thank you.
And you want to bring up about the Today Show?
Oh, well, yes, that was late coming out. I think all you has got it. The Today Show is coming to Lake George, and they're asking for people to be out in the audience, to be there by seven thirty in the morning. They're going to and represent Warren County on a Today Show. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to make it, but tourism will be there. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Shallow.
No committee report this month. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Wild.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Personnel and higher education met. There's three resolutions before this board this morning. First is a floor resolution, and that's regarding support of funding for SUNY Adirondack. I will hopefully get a chance to respond to the esteemed supervisor Freeman's files and the note that he has, but I will ask President Duffy to come out to give us some insight in terms of how that works, so maybe we can avoid not supporting SUNY today with this resolution proclamation. And ninety-seven is reappointing our commissioner of social services. Ninety-eight is related to the Oak Road settlement, and that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Supervisor McGowan, a report?
No report. Thank you.
Supervisor Beatty.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments on that mandatory class that the state is now insisting that all SUNY colleges students participate and pass. As we know, enrollment at SUNY schools are down, down, and that this obviously won't help it when you make mandatory classes for incoming freshmen, and they must pass it. That's one thing. The fact that the state has cut back on funding for SUNY schools and, and, and our own SUNY operation here in Warren County keeps asking us for more and more money to fill the gap, some of the gap that the state's cutting back on. So, you know, I find that alarming also. And we in Warren County are always continually being asked to fund more and more for the college, and I've been a strong supporter of the college. I'm not sure where that's going to end. It may end today. I don't know, because we can only ask our county residents to pay so much, and we increased the taxes by millions this past budget. I voted against that, but so anyway, I wanted to comment on that issue that Mr. Bruno brought up. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Budget Committee did not meet this past month. However, the Joseph Warren Center Committee there met, and in your packet are two resolutions. One is establishing a capital project and transferring the fifty thousand budgeted for twenty-three to that capital project, and also there's another resolution that picks up the remaining balance of what was budgeted in twenty-two, about twelve thousand eight hundred dollars, and adds that to the capital project. We also received the estimate on design work for the museum part there, and that came in about a hundred and fifty thousand. So we have about sixty-three thousand, and we're looking for a hundred and fifty.
Well, you have to dig up one of your copycans. Supervisor Leggett, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Committee Meta on January twenty-seventh. Welcome back, our veteran committee members, and welcome our new members. We have a strong committee, and we will be digging in and working towards greater financial oversight of the county. As we know, all matters financial from other oversight committees come before finance for a last look before heading onto the full board. We're not a rubber stamp committee. We look over the items that are before us and consider how they affect the whole of our county government. Luckily, our job is made easier from the good work and the deliberations of all the other oversight committees, whose job is made easier by the fine work of our county administration and each department. Before you today, you have fifteen resolutions coming out of finance. Numbers fifty-two and fifty-three on page one, the numbers ninety-nine through one eleven on pages eight and nine of the ordinating index. Twelve of those are roll calls. Ninety-nine and a hundred, we like to fund in the Joseph Warren Center that Supervisor Thomas just told us out, totaling sixty-two thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars. One oh, one oh one is for archive social, which helps with tracking social media items, especially as it relates to FOIL requests. And that's for four thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars per year. One oh two is to transfer four hundred thousand dollars from vehicle reserves to the sheriff's office as planned. Number one of three is gets into our fund balance to settle a court case. It covers our insurance deductible of fifty thousand. One of four is a transfer of funds for the Quaker Road pain healing project to fund the twelve million dollar project upfront, but the final county share will be only five hundred eighty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. Number one of five is appropriating the hundred and twenty-five thousand of computing reserve to the county clerk and the sheriff's office for new equipment. One oh six is our funds for Glen Falls Hospital for expanded behavioral health access, and that's for four hundred forty-four thousand four hundred forty-eight dollars. Number one oh seven relates to Northern Borders Region Commission grant totaling two hundred thousand dollars for a bikeway project. One oh eight is to fund petty cash account for forty dollars for real property. One oh nine is to appropriate from deferred revenue, fifty-two thousand eight hundred fifty dollars for a handicap accessible van for the sheriff's office. One ten is to record the chargeback of taxes for two Glen Falls properties totaling seven thousand two hundred two dollars. And number eleven is transferring funds on our debt reserve to help cover the cost of van payments, and that totals forty-eight thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars. There are several items to keep our eye on and advocate for on behalf of our county and other counties, and you'll see these in resolutions that are coming up later here. One is about redistribution Medicaid reimbursements, the EMAP and FMAP. The other is the state funding for community colleges, and the third one that I know, anything else today, but something to keep an eye on is how the revenues from our tax sales and how they are distributed, and that could affect our program, our funding, our environmental testing reserve fund. That was my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Diamond, anything?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No reports today.
Report of county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Both Supervisor Leggett and Supervisor Thomas have talked about the museum. On the thirty-first of January, the Warren County Historical Society met to discuss the Joseph Warren Museum. The historical, the historical society basically wants to turn the, the house we have on Gurnee Lane, known as Building Eleven, into the Joseph Warren Museum. The house a large collection of Joseph Warren memorabilia. There are many counties named Warren County in the country, and the fact that we've been chosen to house this collection is, is an honor. We'd like to have everything done by the twenty, two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary in twenty twenty-five of the Revolutionary War and the Battle of Bunker Hill, Hill where Joseph Warren lost his life. La Bella Associates is developing the design that Supervisor Thomas mentioned, and at the completion of the, the design, it'll probably take about six months. We'll go out for bids for the construction. The Historical Society has hired a professional fundraiser to manage donations to fund a portion of the construction. On the seventh of February, I spent the day with Kevin Heydros and the DPW workforce in Warrensburg. I learned a lot about the challenges they face with driver shortages, and anyway, really impressed with everything they accomplish in light of these shortages. So I enjoyed spending time with the workforce and look forward to spending more time with them. The tenth of February, we conducted our annual workplace violence meeting where we review the previous year's instances of workplace violence to determine what changes we need to implement. And one of our big takeaways was social services workers going out by themselves on visits, and we're going to take steps to correct that going forward so that they're not going alone and subjected themselves to potential risk. Fifteenth of February, I attended the Economic Development Corporation's Economic Outlet twenty-three conference. It was hosted by Dr. Duffy and SUNY Adirondack. Chris White of the New York State Department of Labor gave a great presentation on the future of the workforce, and our own Eliza Ochsendorf followed up with a discussion about the initiatives we're doing in Warren County to address that. And if you're not aware of that, basically, the average work age of people across the country is about thirty-eight point six years. The average work age of people in Warren County is about forty-eight point two, I believe. And so we have a large number of our workforce who will be eligible to retire probably in the next ten to fifteen years with not a base of people ready to come in and take some of those jobs. The conference was attended by twenty students from the Bosie's Early College and Business Entrepreneur Program, and it was a pleasure to see them there. So we hope to continue to attract junior people to our workforce. On the fifteenth of Feb, I also got a tour of the National Grid site out on Quaker Road, met with our National Grid rep, Paul Mywinski, to talk about all the power substations across the county, and I wanted to learn, you know, where the main power lines are, where we have potential risk. We do have one area of risk in this county where we don't have redundancy. If a power substation goes out, we're all concerned about power substations, both from hacking malware and ransomware type attacks, as well as what we've seen recently with attacks, physical attacks using weapons against some of the power substations. National Grid is going forward under the New Infrastructure Act of twenty twenty-two to ask for a grant to develop a battery backup site on this one power line that we, where we don't have the redundancy, and we're going to issue a letter of support. I'll present for you to sign as they go in for the grant. They've got a pretty strong business case for this, and this would be a complete batter, one hundred percent battery backup to provide coverage while they made any repairs necessary along that line. We have two floor resolutions that are going to be presented today. Resolutions, four resolutions, two and four, to encourage the governor to reconsider some of the budgetary decisions that were made recently, and we talked about one, what is one for SUNY and one's for the, for Medicaid. And we've been talking about that, but I'll be prepared to talk in more detail when we discuss those resolutions. I'd like to encourage everyone to download the Ready Warren County, New York app on their phone. Helps you stay up to date on events, alerts, news, and anything else that would pertinent, pertinent from an emergency services perspective. Our OES folks have done a great job on that. Poison Director job ad has closed. We had about fifty applicants, and we're pretty encouraged with some of the quality of the applicants we, we've seen. We'll spend the next week going through those, and I believe we'll go to the Tourism Committee and the Personnel Committee with a recommendation. We're probably about the top five candidates, and, and then we'll move forward with interviews and selection on that. I'd like to now recognize our employees who have twenty years of greater service to Warren County. Dan Durkey of Public Health, twenty years. Dan Durkey of Public Health, twenty years. Uh, Rob Lynch of the Treasurers Office with twenty years. Bobby Broadway of Social Services for twenty years. Uh, Dustin Spring, uh, the Sheriff's Office with twenty years. Nancy Avett, uh, District Attorney with twenty years. Uh, John Finn of Employment and Training with twenty five and Craig Briggs, Public Health with thirty. Um. Appreciate all the support of all those uh, great employees who have helped us over the years. Uh, looking ahead, appreciate your support for the revised committee schedule uh, that we've put forth. Uh, we're prepared to adjust that as necessary. Um. And uh, Supervisor Merino mentioned uh, the uh, Today Show, so uh, that we encourage everyone to participate. Uh, we are, it's a segment on the Today Show about winter getaways. And most of the getaways are warm weather getaways. We are the only winter getaway that the Today Show has cho- chosen to highlight. So that's pretty cool, I think. I've been looking at our foil policy and what it takes to respond uh, to a lot of the foil requests and I uh I, I don't know if you realize this, but it's about a hundred thousand dollars at least in employee time pre- preparing and responding to these requests. That's all taxpayer money. Uh, and we don't charge anything for those. Uh, not saying we should, but I'd like to come forward with a, with some revisions to the foil policy and I'll bring that forward to the Legislative Rules Committee, uh, maybe talk about those uh, in the upcoming week. And finally, since we've been talking about Joseph Warren so much, I thought I'd close with one of my favorite quotes from Joseph Warren, and I'm always cautious to do anything historic in front of Mr. Strauss. Anyway, and this is a quote from Joseph Warren. Wherever danger is, dear mother, there will be your son. Now is no time for one of America's children to shrink from the most hazardous duty. I will either set my country free or shed my last drop of blood to make her so. Of course, he died uh, June seventeenth, seventeen seventy five at Bunker Hill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McDevitt.
Thank you. I'm easily overlooked. Uh, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. The uh, uh uh, maybe just one item, uh, no community report, but the, the or resolution number four, uh, uh, in terms of uh, community colleges, uh. Uh, I'm an old guy. Um, I was in the first class of the college in nineteen sixty one, okay? So I have a lot of gray hair. Uh, uh, we have no choice but to support education. I mean, it's, it's, it's a no brainer. I mean, uh, Dr. Duffy and her staff, they do good work. And to suggest that we as supervisors, um would not want to fund uh, e- education in our colleges, uh, is just not in keeping with how smart people uh, think today and respond and react. We have to give everyone the ability to compete in a very competitive world. And by supporting our community college, uh, that enables us to in fact do that. So I, I would urge that we would clearly all support that resolution. Thank you.
I've asked without objection to move the county attorney's uh, report to the end of the meeting, so we'll go right into uh, communications.
We have the Cool Insurance Arena twenty twenty two Capital Improvement Spending Report, Warren County Auditors, January twenty twenty three List of Real Property Tax Corrections Processed. Letter from Family Service Association of Glens Falls, Inc., um, appreciating the ARPA funding they received. Email from Carol Burkholz, Chairwoman of the Warren County Conservative Party, Letter of Recommendation for the Appointment of Hillary Suck to the Recently Vacated County Queen'sberry at Large Supervisor Position.
Reading of Resolutions.
Okay. Proposed resolution numbers fifty two through one eleven, as well as four proclamations and ten floor resolutions were distributed to the members of the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, February fourteenth. That met the requirements of the rules of the board. Resolution number eighty eight was amended after mailing to correct the contract language. A motion is needed to approve the amendments to the resolution as provided in your packets.
Somebody want to make motion by supervisors? Merino second by Supervisor Wild to uh put forth the amendment to the resolution. Any discussion? All those favor signify by saying aye. Okay.
Okay. I would also note that the Resolution Index lists Resolution Number Fifty Three as coming from the personnel. That's a committee. That's a typo. It should be Finance. Um, the proclamations you have are number three, Black History Month, number four, Human Trafficking Prevention Month, number five, American Heart Month, and number six, congratulating Dr. John Ruggie on receiving the J. Walter Jucket Award. Hey, there are the ten four resolution and as a motion is needed to bring each one to the floor. So floor resolution number one is waiving the rules for floor resolution number two.
Okay. Somebody want to make that motion by Supervisor Bruno, second by Supervisor Trisco? Discussion. All those in favor? Uh, I, my close, here.
Okay, floor resolution number one is now floor resolution, or sorry, resolution number one twelve. Motion for floor resolution number two to the floor.
Motion. Supervisor Strauss, Supervisor Thomas, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Floor resolution number two is now resolution one thirteen. Motion to bring floor resolution number three to the floor. That's waiving the rules for floor resolution number four.
Motion by Supervisor Dixon, second by Supervisor Durasy, discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Floor resolution number three is now resolution one fourteen. Motion to bring floor resolution number four to the floor.
Supervisor Lab and a motion, second by Supervisor Leggett, discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
So floor resolution number four is now one fifteen. Motion to bring floor resolution number five, waiving the rules for floor resolution number six to the floor.
Supervisor Dickson, we have a second Supervisor Smith. All those in favor?
And floor resolution number five is now one sixteen. Motion to bring floor resolution number six to the floor.
We have a motion, Supervisor Thomas, second by Supervisor Merino. Any discussion? All those in favor? Close, here.
Floor resolution number six is now one seventeen. Motion to bring floor resolution number seven, waiving the rules for number eight to the floor.
We have a motion. Motion by Supervisor Smith. We have a second Supervisor Thomas, discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
Floor resolution number seven is now one eighteen. Motion to bring floor resolution number eight to the floor.
Supervisor Leggett, we have a second Supervisor Merino, discussion? None? All those in favor, signify by saying aye? Okay.
Floor resolution number eight is now number one nineteen. Motion to bring floor resolution number nine, waiving the rules for number ten to the floor.
Supervisor Fraser on the motion. We have a second Supervisor Smith. Discussion. Seeing on all those in favor?
Floor resolution number nine is now number one twenty and motion to bring for a resolution number ten to the floor.
We have a motion by Supervisor Al. We have a second by Supervisor Dickson. Discussion? All those in favor?
Floor resolution number ten is now number one twenty one.
Have a comment on any resolutions? Is anybody for no comment, uh, public which comment on any of the resolution? What does, right? Okay, discussion. Yes, please step up to podium and say your name for the record. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Darlene McCraw. I live in the town of Hafnu. I came to speak because I wanted to show my physical presence here today. I didn't just want to be on a piece of paper. I wanted to show my support both for CDT A and Greater Glens Falls Transit merging, because that's one of my major modes of transportation. Because I ride my trike at my friends' places. I don't support SUNY because SUNY does not support those of us with disabilities similarly, but it supports those people without disabilities that are using tap. I appreciate the Sheriff's Department on getting an ADA accessible van. Thank you so much to the Warren County Sheriff's Department and all of Warren County for thinking about people with disabilities. I also wanted to let you know about the Federal Omset Act. It's an act that allows people with disabilities to live in the most integrated settings. Um, I'm going to give you guys the packet. And also I wanted to let you know that March is Brain Injury Awareness Month. I myself live with a brain injury and I get around all over the place. I love coming up here to Warren County. I came up here last month to work for a couple of weeks. I work up here. I go to the pool arena sometimes to do work. I come up here to do many other things. I love getting food. I love coming up here to play and do a lot of other things up here. And I thank you so much for allowing me to share my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, supervisors, uh, discussion on resolution, Supervisor Strauss.
Yeah, uh, resolution, excuse me, eighty seven. Um, Kevin Heyos is elected to serve as the Second Vice President of the New York State County Highway Superintendents Association for the year of twenty twenty three. This resolution authorizes uh, that appointment. And uh, we all know and respect um, Superintendent Heyos. And I think it needed public announcing uh, that he be um, authorized to fulfill this position. And I want to thank him and the board for approving eighty seven when it comes before us.
Thank you, John. Any other discussion on resolutions? Supervisor Diamond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to have a discussion on resolution fifty seven and resolution ninety seven. It's appropriate time. Okay, I just have on fifty seven, I have a question and I don't see the department head here today, but we have, uh, we're going to appoint or we're going to remove uh, Mickey Guy who has been a, uh, a big part of the Glens Falls Fire Department. And she's been a solid paramedic for the City of Glens Falls for many, many years. My question is, is this something that she's requested or is this something uh, that uh we're undertaking on our own? I don't know. I don't know what that answer is. Maybe the chairman of that committee could speak to that, but I don't see any documents or any backup just indicating why the removal of this particular individual.
Go ahead Supervisor Durasy.
Yeah, I'm not sure of that answer. If you'd like, before the vote, I'll try to reach uh, our Director of Emergency Services and get a response.
Thank you.
Yep, the only thing I can comment is, you know, from time to time, they do, if, if somebody goes out of a position, I think Mickey was a coordinator for EMS. I think that's may why they uh, are they taking her off the EMS committee?
Uh, she's currently, they're taking her off the EMS coordinator.
Yeah, that's probably why, probably why that she was removed. I'm, I'm not privy to that, but I know from time to time that they do that. I think that she gave up the EMS coordinator's position. That's why they did that.
If we can get an answer.
Yeah.
I certainly will appreciate it. Um, the next item is I'd like to have discussion on a resolution ninety seven. And I'd like to include a roll call vote on ninety seven also.
Okay.
Okay, um, resolution ninety seven is the reappointment of the Social Services Commissioner. I wasn't ready. It's a five-year appointment. And it looks like the appointment expires on March nineteenth, two thousand twenty three. I'd like to have an opportunity, if the full board would agree to sit down and take a look at his past performance and find out uh, what his goals and ambitions are for the next five years. Uh, I think that that would present us with an opportunity to evaluate and uh, you know, it makes our decisions to reappoint easier if we have an opportunity to do that. So I would suggest that uh, we do that before our March meeting. And that would allow us to interview him, talk to him about his goals and ambitions, and we can uh, assess his uh, his job performance for the last five years.
Are you uh, making a motion?
I'm making a motion to
Table?
Table that along with a roll call vote.
Do we have a second to that motion to table? Supervisor Bruno?
Yes.
Motion to table the second. We'll do a roll call vote. Any, there's no discussion, so we'll roll call that.
Just on the motion to table resolution number ninety seven, Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
No.
Mrs. Fraser?
No.
Mister, I'm sorry. Mr. Durasy? We're voting on a motion to table resolution ninety seven, appointing the um Department of Social Services Commissioners. Are you in favor of labeling?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Merino?
No.
Mr. Strauss?
No.
Mr. Wild?
No. No.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt? Chairman Garrity?
No.
Hey, there are only four hundred and fifteen votes in favor, so the motion to table fails.
Okay. Will our request a roll call? Supervisor Bramer?
Thank you. On, on ninety seven, I, I would have liked the opportunity to meet with Mr. Hanchit prior to our reappointing him for another five years. I would ask that he you know, go through his performance over the last five years, look forward, going through goals for the next five years for this important department. And some additional information has come to light to me in the last couple of days that I'm sure not all the supervisors have. And I think that before we were to appoint him, uh, all of us should be privy to that information, whether or not you agree with it or care about it. I still think it should be provided to the supervisors and I think it's wrong. So I will not be voting for this, number ninety seven.
Any other discussion on resolutions? Supervisor Durasy?
Yes, having response in reference to resolution number fifty seven. Um, Mickey Guy has been removed for that, uh, because she's no longer the EMS coordinator. The EMS coordinator is a county employee. Uh, as past practice, it takes place, the new coordinator will then assume that position.
Thank you. Any other discussion on resolutions? Supervisor Ringer?
Thank you. On eighty one, I understand the municipalities seeking additional occupancy tax funding. But I don't agree with doing away with our current process where you can apply for funding, get it through the county, use it for projects and have it a very transparent process that the county and the supervisors understand what is being um, applied for and how the funding is being used when we send it off to the towns. We have no idea what happens with the money afterwards. We heard during the occupancy tax meeting, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago that Ms. Grant doesn't have the time to be walking through all of the applications that we have. So there's certainly, she's certainly not going to be available to walk through all the applications that the town gets and to understand how all of that money is being spent and we'll never see any reporting to the county. So I'm not going to be in support of that either. Eighty one and I'd like a roll call, please.
Can I respond to that as I was to? You can have a roll call. Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I don't think as chair you should be debating
All right, I'll have a
Topic.
Supervisor Dickson.
Well, I don't know if I'll be as, and I'm an eloquent as you. But I take offense to that. I know in my town, you can come up and ask about any of the applications and we'll give you the what for and why not. And we probably give away more money than anybody else other than the county. We know what these projects are and we are able to go through them quickly and professionally and make a decision. As I'm sure the other towns are, Bolton and Queensberry. Uh, this isn't some frivolous thing that we do. This is something we take seriously. In that meaning that you're all talking about, paying for the business people in our communities, is their money. They collected it and sent it to us to be distributed and it's up to us to do a good job of that and giving money back to the towns is a good job.
Okay, Supervisor Merino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will say, agree with Mr. Dickinson. And secondly, every town has to fill out a form on March, by March first uh, to return on what each town or has spent their money on, but we do watch it. Thank you.
Supervisor McGowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I uh, I I I see what Supervisor Bramer is saying. And I understand where Supervisor Dickens coming from and Merlino. But I have never seen the reports of where that money goes. And it's just being accountable. That's the the transparency, I think we look here is just an understanding. I have never seen it. I know I have asked Lisa in the past for it to go, so you know, i- it's not that we're questioning. Um, you know, what you're doing, we just would like to see where. Like you're putting your money and and all the towns should put, yeah, and it's just being accountable. That's all I believe Supervisor Bramer is asking for.
Supervisor Dixon?
I really call my control and answer where my money went?
I don't need to. I I've.
Supervisor Bramer?
Well, I'd like to make an official request that we are asking the towns to provide us the information, not just a voucher with the dollars. We'd like to know what the projects are. What are you spending the money on? If you don't want to run it through the county anymore? And this is going to go through, fine. I don't want just an executed agreement and the municipal um resolution. We want to see what the projects are and how much went to each one. I have asked, I have looked into Bolton and I can't, it's impossible to figure it out.
Supervisor Dixon?
Smell that information. It's real. Yeah, well, I don't know. Nobody can find it.
Right.
And I'm telling you, if you're worried about what we're doing with the money like George. Send it to you. How much we spent and where we spent it. And I'm in the shade, we have previous years that we spent and how much we spent on each project, each and every one of them.
Mr. Chairman, in in terms, and I think everyone knows my attitude towards occupancy taxes. Uh, it may not always mesh with the individual town supervisors. But in this case, uh, a couple of years ago, I did ask a bunch of questions. And the attorney's office has all these reports. They're submitted every year, at least they were a few years ago when I found them. And I had them and I looked at them and I studied them. And they come back with reports about what they spent their money on. I may not have agreed when I first looked at them, but it didn't take long to reach out to the supervisors to find out what the benefit was. And we just have to start doing some of our homework. Uh, it's there. I believe it's still in the attorney's office. Maybe someone else now, but that's where I found it a couple of years ago. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Amen. Supervisor Driscoll?
Yes, thank you. Um. I'm going to call it. Uh, I made a practice of of visiting each of the communities uh at least once a year. Um, I can remember um going over to Stony Creek to Mountain Days. Uh, kind of a fun weekend of of activities. Uh, they also produced a uh brochure. That um uh listed all the activities of the year. I've been up to Hague and. And uh, and asked um uh supervisor, you know, how they spent their money. I think if if we want to to get the answers, we've got to ask the questions. Um, those are just two communities that I've visited. Uh, I've understood uh from uh the elected officials, how they're they're spending their money. And and the return on their investment in those. And and I'm, I've been satisfied with uh learning, because they receive a lot less than uh a lot of the other larger communities do. But um, you know, they know what's going to uh benefit uh not just the residents of the town, but also uh tourists and visitors coming in. So uh, I think you've got to ask the questions if you want to get the answers. Thank you.
Supervisor Bramer?
Thank you. I guess I would like to direct my question to the county attorney then, are the reports sitting there? And if I walk down there, am I going to be able to look at all the old ones? I mean, we haven't done this for a couple of years. But every town has submitted a report on all their spending on a municipal funding. And they're sitting there, no one looks at them unless we go and ask. Is that correct?
No, what you're saying is not correct. What is correct is that since November of twenty-two. When I uh twenty-one, when I started, we've gone through one cycle. The contract, which is the basically the agreement that goes out to each municipality that they signs. Requires each municipality as part of that agreement in receiving those funds to provide reporting back to the county. That reporting goes, I believe, through tourism and to my office because it's a contractual term. And I am aware that last year and last cycle, there were reports that came back through. To characterize him as just sitting there, I I don't think it's a fair cate- uh way to categorize it. And I can't vouch for what may be in files going back multiple years. What I can very clearly say is that in this cycle, specifically resolution eighty-one. My office has moved forward. We treat it the way we've been trying to treat every issue that comes before the county's attorney's office. If you look, if you were to compare this resolution to past resolutions, it's much more specific. I can personally tell you, I spent close to an entire day going through resolutions that go back to two thousand and three. That lot in the area of occupancy tax, which largely are inconsistent, conflicting, and just bluntly don't make much sense. So it's my hope as we move through this year, with resolution eighty-one kind of being the starting point in the foundation. We're going to be able to work through a number of the occupancy tax. Resolutions that the county seems to rely on. And maybe proposing ways to clarify and make more enforceable or clearer. What actually are the rules that this board decides they want to use going forward? In the area of occupancy tax, specifically, the resolution that's in front of you now. Has a provision that used to be in these resolutions years ago. And is required under prior resolutions, which is simply that the municipality. Um, provide a copy of the resolution accepting these funds. So the little technical pieces are very important and over time they've. It's been hard to keep track of what the requirement is because it appears that there are so many resolutions historically. A complete binder of of resolutions. Um, that just sometimes either, sometimes they're consistent, sometimes they conflict. Um, so my hope is going into this year, it will uh be much clearer for the entire board. And for my office of what the intent of this board is going forward. So last year, there were reports that were received. There will be reports this year that are received. And hopefully, the occupancy occupancy tax committee can provide guidance to this board. As to what, if anything, should happen to those reports once they come in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And and so the reports also go into the tourism office. And uh, I know that you you're aware, we have been a little short-staffed there, but there is a res- resolution before you. To uh create another position. Actually, we're turning one position into another position. I can talk about it when it comes up. Uh, to be a principal primary account clerk who will keep track of all the requests for occupancy tax. And how they're spent as they go out. So uh records going forward are going to be, as as. Uh, the county attorney had mentioned, uh, well-kept. Thank you.
Supervisor Bramer?
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I I guess I just want to comment that it reflects my concern that in the past, the reporting and the record keeping and the tracking has not been that great. It hasn't. So going forward, I hope that it will be better and we'll have clear um lines between. This is the money that was allocated in two thousand twenty-three. This is how the town spent it and we'll do it a different way next, you know, not a different way. But it will be tracked clearly each year as the money goes out and is spent. Thank you.
Supervisor Leggett?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at resolution number eighty-two and the first resolved. I want to thank the attorney's office for spelling out so clearly all the various budget codes. And their funding that goes along with them. This is very clear for the record. Thank you.
If I could just comment on that, uh, the credit to that goes uh entirely uh to. Uh, Amy Turcot in my office and to Ryan Lynch and the treasurer's office for working so well together and so closely together. To make sure that those budget codes, which appear throughout the resolutions, are correct month after month after month. And on a rare occasion where we miss it, we appreciate your grace in uh when you see that amendment resolution comes through, which doesn't happen too often.
Any more discussion on eighty-one? Any uh Supervisor Beatty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um. I think it was kind of knowledge that it was very loosey-goosey in past years to reporting from the towns. Some towns did it, some towns didn't. That's a fact. But going forward, if this tightens that up, I'm all for that. That tightens up the recounting responsibility to the board and how the money's tracked. I'm all for that. So unfortunately, we can't bring back two years or three years, which was, I can tell you, every town was not reporting in or doing it halfway. Some were doing a great job with it. It's because helter-skelter. So, but if this, if this reinforces doing it correctly. On time and thoroughly, I'm all for that. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion on eighty-one or eighty-two? Any other discussion on resolution? Supervisor McGowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, is it all right if I uh, I I bring back resolution ninety-seven? Because after the the vote and that and listening um and some thinking, I'd I'd like to make a comment on this. Thank you. Um, Supervisor Diamond brought up a good point. And it, you know, I I have really nothing against the uh uh appointing or reappointing. Um, but he makes a really good point and I'm really shocked uh of of the way uh that it didn't get tabled and the way the vote went. Because through the fact this, this is the second largest department that we have. And why wouldn't we want to hear the goals in that? I mean, this is a huge department. The sheriff has to go out and get, you know, the biggest departments, our sheriff's department has to go out and get reelected. So why would we sit down as a bear supervisors? And listen, I was, I'm just totally shocked uh uh the outcome of what Supervisor Diamond acts for. And and I really, but the, I I think this is a good, it it's nothing against Chris, but. Mr. Henshaw or the department, but as I think we owe this. To our constituents and our social, you know, services that we provide everybody in our county to do this. So I would like to 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 bring up this to be tabled again, if that's possible.
Oh, we can't bring it up. Very beneficial, right? Bring it up again? Do you want to make a motion to retable again?
I I would like to retable it again after making my speech.
A second, Matt, is that?
Yeah, you can do it again.
Roll call, discussion. I guess we don't lose discussion, we'll have a roll call over again.
Don't, don't.
No discussion.
Don't we discuss on the motion to table? Didn't we go through that?
I guess we can. Okay, go ahead.
I don't have any discussion. Allow discuss.
Do I need to speak about the motion to table or can I speak about the motion in general?
Motion, it's a motion to table.
We're on the motion to table right now.
Um, I have no comment about the motion to table, otherwise I think we should just defeat that, move forward and talk about this resolution and get it passed.
We're going to vote? Please. We have a supervisor.
Yeah, I just have a comment. Why wouldn't we want to table this if there's more information to be had? Like a five-year plan that Mr. Supervisor Glens Falls were asking about and other things. I I. I'm a little lost for words of why we wouldn't want to table this, that there's more information to be garnered. So uh, doesn't make a lot of sense. Nothing's gonna, bad's gonna happen. We could have that, have that tabled, have the discussion. Uh, and have it brought before the next board meeting in March, which would still be the allotted time and the correct timeframe if we were going to approve it. So nothing's lost. We only gain, which is information. So I will obviously vote to table it.
Supervisor Wild?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I I just, my only comment is is that I would have more to talk about this resolution. But since I'm uh muzzled, so to speak, to talk just about tabling, uh, you know, maybe we can bring it to the floor and have some discussion about it.
Supervisor Diamond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, when I initially proposed tabling it, wasn't the intent to be harmful to the uh. Social Services Commissioner, but it, but the intent was, we're paying him a lot of money, hundred and twelve thousand dollars. He's committed, he was committed to uh five years. And it appears to me, you look at the uh, the resolution that Personnel Administration. Uh, and Higher Education Committee viewed him as um qualified. Well, I'm not questioning the qualifications. I'm just questioning his performance. And I think that we need to do more performance evaluations. And specifically, when we were talking about a large sum of money, and I'd like to hear what his proposal is for the next five years. It's very simple. It doesn't have to be complicated, but it certainly provides us with knowledge of his goals and his ambitions. So.
Okay, Supervisor Leggett, Supervisor Drossi? Did you want to speak to?
Yes, I did. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I supported Supervisor Diamond's uh first motion to to table. Because he brought up some good points about us all hearing about the future of the Department of Social Services is brought forth by the commissioner. The commissioner has performed very well over the past five years, enough so that the personnel committee recommends his reappointment as as well. I will not uh support this second tabling, though it failed on the first and felt that was sufficient. I will recommend that the commissioner provide to the appropriate committee what those plans and goals are. So that we are aware of what is um the the shape of DSS in the next five years. Thank you.
Supervisor Drossi?
I have any comment?
Supervisor Driscoll?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, as the board, do we want to um? Just. Uh, interview one department head? I mean, in fairness to all of the department heads, if we're going to interview one department head and ask for his or her. Annual work plan, goals and objectives uh for five years, shouldn't we be doing it for each and every department? Uh, each department in its own way is is. The most important department uh uh in Warren County. Whether it's a department of of ten people or a hundred and fifty people. Uh, so in fairness to the department heads, uh, shouldn't we be asking all of those department heads the questions? Which I think we already asked during the uh the budget period. It it's not just about numbers when uh, when they come before us uh for the budget. Uh, workshops. Uh, it's about their goals and objectives, uh, hiring, retention. All of those things that go into running a department. So I guess I I ask my colleagues to uh. To consider the fairness of just basically isolating one or two departments just based on their size. And uh, and open up that process if we choose to do so, to all of the departments uh, depending on. You know, small, medium and large uh. Low budgets, medium budgets and high budgets. Thank you.
Supervisor McGowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, I I respectfully disagree um with my colleagues in Glens Falls, Supervisor Driscoll. Not every position director is an appointed position. This isn't as an appointment and 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 it is a big department. I I just think, you know, for my sake, um, you know. Maybe, maybe he deserves more money, you know?
Supervisor McGowan, we're talking about the motion to table. We should stick to that.
All right, I I disagree to the fact that not all directors' positions are appointed.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion or should we vote on the motion? Yes, we'll vote. Roll call.
Ms. Bramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
No.
Mrs. Frazier?
No.
Mr. Drossi?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Dickinson?
No.
Mr. Merlino?
No.
Mr. Straw?
No.
Mr. Wild?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Leggett?
No.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
No.
Chairman Garrity?
No.
Hey, there are only three hundred and thirteen votes in favor. Hey, there are only three hundred and thirteen votes in favor, so the motion fails.
Right. Supervisor Bramer?
Thank you very much. I would like the opportunity to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter of a particular employ- employee. That's a motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second to go on personnel? We need a second.
If I could ask just to amend that so that the motion would be, the executive session would be to discuss a matter leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person?
Yes, thank you.
Is that, so that's actually amended? Yes, we're doing. Okay, all those in favor going to executive sessions signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those ayes?
No.
Aye.
Guess the ayes have them. So we'll clear the room for executive section.